Test. Good evening, everyone. This is uh City Council Budget Hearing Number Four. We're called together as a committee to hold to review the proposed 2026 budget. Tonight we'll be hearing from the Assessment Department, the City Clerk's Department, and the Mayor's Office. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to welcome up our assessor, Terry Hughesby, to present. Oh, thank you. Well, she can come get seated. Will the clerk please do the roll? No, 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 sit down. It's fine.
Uh, Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Hodgkins.
Present.
Councilmember Dundon.
Present.
Councilmembers Rathmo and Chair Cav- Councilmember Matt Rathmo is absent, Chair Kavanaugh.
Here.
And Councilmember Matavetski is also absent. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have the city assessor here with us, and we'll open Budget Page Twenty Three, which is the Department of Assessment, please. I don't think we got a written overview from you.
The budget remained the same as last year. No changes.
Okay. So there are no highlights or lowlights. You just have a what? Oh.
It's pretty simple budget.
You might be the only department in the city in which your personnel expenses somehow went down.
Excuse me?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is six and eight. Never mind. No, never mind.
No.
I was reading a six and an eight. That's all.
Yeah, that's just the 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 raise.
No, it was my, I was reading one twenty-eight, eight seventy, and I thought it was one twenty-eight, eight seventy, one twenty-eight, six ninety, but it's a six, not an eight. So I'm sorry. I thought you actually went that. So anything you would like to fill council in about?
No, my budget's pretty straightforward with office supplies. And the basically, like I said before, everything didn't change from the prior year. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
How's the uh how's the Assessment Grievance Board been operating? And have you had success? I think there were a couple of vacancies last we knew. Are you?
Well, um, the bar is very slimmed down to two bar members only right now, and they're all both up for reappointment. Uh, the mayor selects the bar members out of the mayor's office, and I do talk to him throughout the year, asking if anybody is interested in serving on that committee. The only problem with the bar is that they have to serve during work hours um before Tuesday of May and a couple of days after be available if I have a lot of grievances. But they do do a three-hour training to be a bar member, and they need to be a resident of the city of Binghamton, at least eighteen years old. And um so as for right now, there's three openings. So for a bar of five, which per city charter, they have.
So we are, we are or not up to snuff. I thought you said there were only two right now.
We only have two. No, we're not up to snuff.
Out of five. So we are missing three. So.
Any interest should go to the mayor's office, express their interests.
And we pay what? Pay them four hundred dollars apiece?
Correct.
So if somebody is sick on the, well, if one of these two people is sick on the, on Grievance Day, we're in big trouble, right?
Correct. Then I have to contact Broom County Real Property. And there's
Oh, okay. What's the, so yeah, so what's the backup procedure?
The backup is the county clerk. Or um the um county clerk. It's has been a long time since I, um, the legislator clerk. And not the real property director, because she does the courses. I think it's county clerk clerk that that the legisla- the legislator clerk is to open, I know.
I mean, I I guess I'm glad there is a fallback, but it's not an ideal. So.
No, it's not ideal.
All right. So if anyone has friends that would like to be on the Board of Assessment Review and go over assessment grievances, I'm sure it's riveting. Four hundred dollars.
Very interesting, actually. People do. It's
All right. Any other questions?
Um, you didn't use your appraisal services yet this year.
No, that is because we didn't have any um legal reason to hire an appraiser to do an appraisal for surgery negotiations this past year. But a typical appraisal can cost thousands of dollars. That's why we have to have one. Or the mayor's office or legal counsel asked for appraisal. That's my department that helps pay for the appraisal.
Okay.
They need one.
So it makes good sense to keep that money in that budget line at seventy-five-hundred?
Okay. Anyone else? Do we maybe actually want to close this page? Hey, I get a motion to close assessment, please. Page twenty-three and twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Page twenty-three and twenty-four are closed. Thank you so much. Have a good night. And now we will have the clerks, vital statistics, and city council budget presented by you're doing this? All right. By the city clerk and the deputy clerk. Welcome. You can min it yourselves. Right, so we will open page twenty-six first. Twenty-six, twenty-seven is the clerk. And who's giving us our overview?
You want to do the overview and I'll chime in?
Sure. Would you like me to start with the executive summary or just go overview line by line?
Why don't you go over your very thoroughly prepared summary?
Our summary. Okay. Yep. So uh, starting with Personnel Services, um, you'll see salary adjustments for the clerk, deputy city clerk, and senior licensing clerks. Uh, the clerk and deputy clerk align with permanent legislation R two-five-four-nine, which was passed unanimously this year by the city council, and then reviewed by the mayor's office, um, and CSEA contract updates for the senior licensing clerks. If you recall, we added a senior licensing clerk this year. That was part of the budget last year. I'm pleased to report that we had great success hiring and retaining a senior licensing clerk who's done a tremendous job. Um, so we're very grateful for that. That aligns with the restructure. So you'll notice the removal of the licensing clerk position. That position was previously held half-time in the Vital Statistics Office and half-time in the Clerk's Office. We removed that, and now we have two full-time folks over in Vital Statistics and two senior licensing clerks full-time on the clerk's side. Um, there was a title adjustment for the Vital Statistics clerk to reflect that restructure, and the registrar title remains the same. Um, under professional development, we've asked for an increase in travel and training and subs dues and membership, and that's to support participation in various professional development opportunities. So we were able to send our registrar to the New York State Town Clerks Association Conference. That was very successful. Uh, the deputy clerk, that's me, also went to NICOM this year. Um, I went for fall training school and learned a lot over five days. Was able to bring a lot back to the clerk's office and the vital side. Um, and I think that's an invaluable opportunity that we'd like to expand to other staff members in the office, not just to management. We also um included membership fee for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Program. So that's the IIMC. They have a much more rigorous clerk training program than they do um at Nistica. And so that would be a great opportunity to be able to share with other folks in our office. There has unfortunately been a history of not encouraging professional development within the clerk's office. And given that the rules and regulations at the state level change so frequently and are so integral to both our legal obligations um as the city of Binghamton, but also just in our ability to um maintain compliance and knowledge on records management, we think that it's important that we uh improve that staff training um and encourage them to continue to develop professionally. Uh, for equipment and technology, very, very small adjustments, but we'd like to invest in some small-scale equipment, a digital camera and a scanner to modernize our record-keeping processes. Um, so specifically, we have very delicate and old records that we maintain in the clerk's office. Currently, we are using cell phones to take pictures of some of those records. We'd like to create a more secure and efficient process for being able to manage those records and digitize them. There are a few capital requests that we included related to security upgrades to prioritize staff and public safety, and we'll go through those in more detail. And then accessibility and infrastructure, we were very fortunate to be assisted by STIC in doing an accessibility assessment of city council chambers. I think anyone that's been in this room, but for the folks at home, it is a highly inaccessible space, and we would like to improve that accessibility so that more folks from the public and for when we have public meetings can participate. Um, and that aligns with some of the ADA compliance goals that we've discussed on the chamber before.
Shall we continue to line by line?
Yes, we should.
I'm curious about the scanner real quick. Um, is there, you've got like the all-in-one printer thing is, and that doesn't?
Yeah, so this is
Not good for that type of record that you're talking about?
This is actually a desktop scanner, so it's different. Um, some of the books are extremely oversized, so we can't effectively scan them on the current scanner that we have. Other books are quite literally falling apart, or we can't take the binding out of them, so they can't be physically scanned in the same way that you would be able to on an all-in-one printer scanner. The most economical and recommended tool for that kind of scanning is usually what's called a desktop scanner or a book scanner, uh, similar to a handheld lawn scanner, but slightly more um sophisticated so that we get clear imaging. We do have to uphold specific image standards.
Is there, have you explored like a digitization service for that? Is that outside of the budget or?
Those are significantly more burdensome budget-wise than this solution.
I think long-term, we do have plans for digitizing records in the office. We continue to learn more from each grant application cycle about how to secure funding for digitization projects. I do feel strongly that there was a steep learning curve for the entire office in terms of the digitization project and sort of the effort that that would um require from everybody. So as everybody is sort of settled into their new roles and we have a better distribution of the workload, I think that we can start being more forward-looking towards larger-scale projects like digitization. In the meantime, we see the desktop scanner and the digital camera as a sort of triage point for dealing with day-to-day records management. If you want, I can go into line by line.
Sure.
Great. Um, so A four zero two zero dot five one zero zero zero, Personal Services, um, an increase by seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Oh, sorry, I skipped to red vitals. My bad. Sorry. A one four one oh dot five one zero zero zero, Personal Services. That's in the clerk's office. That's an increase of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five and forty-nine cents. That includes the city clerk and deputy city clerk salary increases related to the permanent legislation that I mentioned earlier, as well as the CSEA adjustments for the senior licensing clerks. Um, and then just acknowledging the removal of the licensing clerk position. No change in temporary services. We've asked for a hundred dollars in the overtime line. That's just a reserve overtime budget for emergency or unforeseen circumstances so that we don't have to move the money around should we need the overtime.
Do you use that often or no?
I don't believe that we used any of it last. We haven't used any this year. I think we used fifteen dollars and fifty, yeah, fifteen fifty-five.
Yeah, there was exactly one instance last year where the deputy clerk and I happened to simultaneously be sick and both had to miss a full day of work, and one of our staff stepped up to help triage a tiny bit. And so we were able to cover that with that very small overtime expense. We just like to make sure if some unforeseen circumstance like that comes up again that we can accommodate it.
Um, in office equipment, as I mentioned, digital camera for the records management procedure. The current procedure is using a cellphone camera. We'd like to improve the security and efficiency of that process by having a digital camera that the staff can use. We've confirmed with IT that this is the best and most cost-efficient route while still maintaining the integrity of the images. So we've asked for two hundred dollars for that. No change in office supplies, printing, professional services, technical services, rent or lease, equipment lease or rental, equipment repairs, maintenance, legal ads or advertising. As I mentioned earlier, we are asking for one thousand additional dollars in the travel and training line, um, and that is to accommodate sending staff to more professional development opportunities, potentially including Nistica, NICOM, IIMC, as well as our um our licensing, our staff on the vital statistics uh side, which is included in the travel and
A question. So if um uh, if we give you the adjustment, you're going to use it?
Yeah, I was actually going to add that even this year with the two trainings that were stated just just recently, um, we've already fully expended our travel and training budget. We have run it out and not that we need to be going to trainings all the time, but we couldn't do another training if we even wanted to consider one at this point.
Didn't, uh, you haven't used the translation services?
So that is a requirement that we keep the translation services, and that's in case there's a meeting where translation is required. Been communicated to us that we should not get rid of that.
Although we haven't found an opportunity to draw on it yet, but that doesn't mean the one will present itself.
I will also point out, like, both the clerk and I are bilingual and able to assist in translation within the context of our office, but for official matters, we're not qualified to be official translators.
Thank you.
Yep. And subs dues and memberships. Again, um, we would like to add the IIMC again, because this offers uh additional webinars, training opportunities, and free resources. That's an incredible opportunity for staff that's unable, for whatever reason, to attend those professional development trainings, to have access to those right from the office. Um, and we're able to have great team-building exercises and team trainings where we share those resources with each other. Um, and then the Broom County Municipal Clerks Association, the clerk and I go to a monthly meeting with that group and share knowledge about what's happening in Broom County.
I I'd just like to add how how vital I I believe this IIMC membership will be to the future of the clerk's office. Um, the Department of Health is really the governing entity for a lot of the policies that we administer, and there's not a whole lot of training available through the department, so we kind of have to seek other avenues to obtain that level of training.
Questions on twenty-six, twenty-seven? All right, can we quickly hit Records Management on thirty-five? It's the Rogers storage and shredding. I think there's no change.
Yep.
Shockingly, they haven't increased to try to increase us or anything. How long does that contract go for?
Sorry.
Do we know how long the contract is or it just keeps?
I think that might be a CR question.
The contract isn't with our office.
Rogers?
No, it's with the whole city. Yeah.
I I don't know when the contract ends. I'd have to look that up for you.
We are more the stewards of that process than the contractors.
Fair enough. Uh, city twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-five.
And before we move on, PSA to everyone in City Hall that if you need shredding done, all you have to do is shoot an email to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov, and we will come and do shredding for you.
There you go. Good to know. Uh, all right, seventy-six, Vital Statistics.
Sure. Um, so beginning with Personal Services, there's an increase of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents that represents the CSEA adjustments to the registrar and the vital statistics clerk. Uh, no change to temporary services, same justification for the one hundred dollar increase in overtime, just in case that should happen. Noting that on that side of the office, there are fewer staff, just two people. Um, I am technically able to jump to the vital statistics side and fill in when the registrar is not there. But it is a bit um more tight over there. Um, for office equipment, mentioned the desktop scanner. We are estimating about five hundred dollars for that piece of equipment. For office supplies, uh, I believe we asked for a two hundred dollar increase. Uh, that's to reflect that we have another full-time staff member over on that side, and because we have another full-time staff member, we've been able to start expanding work on projects that unfortunately have been put off for many, many, many years, such as relabeling and reorganizing the cabinets. Um, it
It also is accompanied by a two hundred dollar decrease in printing, so really it's a net zero transfer between those two. Um, I felt as the person who orders all of the office supplies for that office that um that was a more appropriate home for those two hundred dollars for the need.
And then no change in professional services or equipment repairs and maintenance.
Any questions on vitals?
I guess no, I'm just wondering if the whole hall of City Hall orders paper, paper together, or is every department just? Do they combine our orders and then put one in, or is it?
Are you referring to the security paper?
I think he just means paper.
No, just like regular eight and a half by eleven.
And they they usually, I think that's usually done in bulk, and then the the departments do a pick ticket through the mailroom, and then we deliver it and we charge it to their budget line.
And I I believe I can add that it's produced by AVRE.
Yeah, AVRE, right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see. We should also open clerks' fees on two oh five. No changes this year?
No changes.
So everything's humming smoothly? We don't need
Yeah.
Increases, decreases, anything to tweak?
I'll happily report that we did decrease the unlicensed penalty fee, excuse me, last year. Um, and we believe that that's correlated to um in- increased compliance in dog licensing. Um, we've seen almost every um shelter dog picked up once those are sent, those requests are sent through to our office, which is frankly, a relief, and um we're happy to see that improvement, and that was recommended by the animal control officer.
I will note, we also have the city council budget to still consider.
I know, I know.
Okay.
Any questions about fees? No? All right. Then we can page back to fifteen or city council budget.
Yep. So Personal Services increased two thousand and sixteen dollars. That is the standard charter-issued city council salary increase. No change in temporary services, overtime, office supplies, professional services, equipment lease rental, or building equipment improvement and maintenance. A small increase of a hundred and fifty dollars in travel and training, and that's just to distribute the travel and training budget equally. It was, for some reason, not distributed equally. So this makes it so that every councilperson gets three hundred dollars for travel and training. We expect to spend that out this year. And for subs dues and memberships, no change.
Okay. So this is especially on my mind, since I'm sitting right here in this seat at this moment. We don't have anything in our building equipment improvement and maintenance line. I know we've been talking with IT about speakers. Do we have any idea what a new set of speakers would cost for this room? Because I will move the money into this line right now.
So I don't know that this is the line that it would go into. Um.
I don't care. We'll make it the line.
Either way, I I don't, I, that's a great question for when IT is down here. Um. I believe that it's been discussed and priced out, but I don't, I don't know.
Um, because it it is a struggle for every meeting that happens in here right now, and it's 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 a very basic need in the public facility, and I mean, we 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 struggle with it every meeting. All the other groups that meet in here struggle with it. We had, we 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 when we have a a really public-facing event like the mayor's budget address, we can't use our own PA system. It's ridiculous. So that's my pet peeve. Sorry. And it's it's, I I assume people at home cannot hear how bad the the uh buzzing and fuzzing is that goes on, but anyway, all right, I won't do something brazen and make that motion, but I think by the end of the budget process, we need to put it someplace.
Does anybody else that prepared the budget more intimately know if that was budgeted for an IT somewhere? Or should we make the effort to figure out?
And I guess this, I mean, this broadly, broadly, or broadly, within a more broad speaking sense, uh, what about the capital improvements uh that you brought up in the clerk's office budget, which some of which also are mostly applied to this chamber?
I can go through.
When those were uh discussed, with with those discussed in the budget meeting with the mayor, how was the reception? Are we what would potential action items on that look like?
I can walk through the capital improvements list if you'd like. I provided it for everybody. Um. It does not include the speaker system. I will just caveat that right off the top. Um, but again, happy to follow up with IT and discuss that. Um, the the capital improvements that we suggested from the clerk's office include, so for the clerk's office, we mentioned Um, the the capital improvements that we suggested from the clerk's office include, so for the clerk's office, we mentioned panic buttons. Um, we are on the first floor of City Hall, we have the highest number of walk-ins in the building. Um, and we don't have an immediate way to alert the Binghamton Police Department about potential escalations. So we are requesting five panic buttons, one in the vitals office, two in the clerk's offices, uh, one in the control room and chambers, which is up there, and one under the desk of the clerk, where the city clerk is seated right now in chambers. Um, I will say, people walk into the control room unannounced and my back is facing them and that can be quite frightening experience. Fortunately, nothing has happened as a result of it, but additionally, I will say from the control room, we have a certain vantage point. So having a panic button there would be helpful in that way too. We also requested a security camera, there is currently no security camera that points at the exit door in chambers, that would be helpful. The door is a big one for us, so confidential and important records are kept in the clerk's office. There is no door between, and I'm remiss to say this on camera, but unfortunately, cat's out of the bag. There is a way to get down to the clerk's office from that staircase behind Councilmember Murray. Um, we do not currently have any way to block that entrance or exit. Um, and so we have had an issue already this year with somebody entering through the doors at the top of chambers and wandering down into the back of the clerk's office.
From the, from the plaza?
From the plaza, yeah, from the out-outdoor area. The door was left unlocked by somebody. Um, and they wandered into council chambers and instead of going out that door, although not that it would have mattered. I mean, they still didn't go through the metal detector.
And it was purely by accident?
Yeah, no intent, but. Yep. Um, and I can think frankly of four to six times off of the top of my head that those doors have been left unsecured. Likely by accident, again, I don't think that anyone is doing this on purpose, but um, it just creates a security issue. And particularly, not everybody who enters the chambers, even if they go through the metal detectors, is aware that they shouldn't be exiting through the clerk's office. So people will have public meetings here and sort of exit through that staircase, um, and it's not safe for our staff and it's especially not great, given the um, confidentiality of the records that we house in the clerk's office.
I'd just like to remind everyone also that not every public meeting that is held in this room is stewarded by the clerk's office. So we are not always president, present, excuse me, to ensure that everything is going according to plan.
Um, just to, if mine might add something, all of the items that were requested here, um, they're going to be improved. If you improve the CIP plan, they're improved and are in the uh, City Hall capital improvements. A lot of these were discussed in the safety committee, including the security camera and the uh, panic buttons, because other departments have requested panic buttons as well. We do have several that are working, but the work, it's in the works to get more done.
And then lastly, the elevator, um, again, we'd like to extend our gratitude to stick for coming and doing a full-scale assessment.
And the Broom County Health Department.
Yep, um, who came and assisted us and did a walkthrough. Um, accessibility in city council chambers has long been an issue. It's something that we think is incredibly important, especially as we try to improve public participation in local government and in public meetings. Unfortunately, accessibility is deeply difficult at this time for a variety of reasons. But the main barrier that we see is not having a direct elevator into city council chambers. The current situation is such that you have to go up to the second floor and then go through the outdoor area and um, enter through those exterior doors. That creates a number of issues, not least of which is Binghamton's weather. Um, but also just the um, cumbersome nature of that whole process. And if someone tries to enter while a meeting is already in progress, it's quite difficult to get somebody to assist you in that process.
Yeah, this process requires at least two staff members to chaperone visitors through that walk.
So the suggestion was made that the simplest uh, solution would be to install an elevator um, down at the base of the first staircase uh, at the entrance to city, the public facing entrance of city council chambers. Kind of going up to where the coat closet is, if you're familiar with that. We discussed this with the mayor's team and they were receptive to it. So again, it's been a team effort by a lot of folks in City Hall to assess the situation as well as um, the maintenance team, they've been incredibly helpful in walking through and talking through ideas with us. This seems to be the best idea, um, and we will be proceeding per the mayor's request to submit an RFQ for the elevator project.
Wonderful, that's.
Yeah, and if anybody has any feedback or ideas about additional accessibility, I know there used to be um, an accessibility task force of some kind that worked on identifying gaps in accessibility in City Hall and in city council chambers. We really welcome any suggestions to clerk@cityofbinghamton.gov or walking into the office. Um, we're happy to pass those suggestions on to both the mayor's office and to the city council.
I'm also happy to send along the full assessment that we received as a result of the walkthrough to anyone who's interested in reviewing any of their other potential suggestions.
All right, any other thoughts, feelings, questions or concerns?
I'm I'm looking at our um, or on page fifteen for city council. Uh, I don't, I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about my uh, amount of business cards I use every year. Um, I don't think we need it to be thirteen hundred fifty um, this for twenty twenty six. Um, and I would propose to decrease it to five hundred bucks. But that's, that's just me and my use of business cards.
You, we haven't ordered business cards for everyone yet this year and we do anticipate having to do an order for at least for the seven council members. That line will be spent out.
Okay.
Yes.
I would, I would almost appreciate uh, uh, just some general city council note cards or something. I mean, we we, we've been doing more proclamations and stuff this year, which is nice, but it's also nice to send out a note once in a while and be nice to have.
I'd like to add too that um, we specifically added more to that line. Um, or discussed having more in that line last year and that I think is why it stayed at this amount. Because we also bill paper to the city council office supply line, potentially when we're printing lots of packets for meetings. So it's not the only thing that that line gets used for business cards, it's just kind of the one that's bumped down.
Yeah. So I guess maybe we just um, bump it out to business card seven hundred and then the rest goes to o- office supply paper. Sound good?
Okay. You can just make that change, right, CR? Okay.
Yes, you're not changing any money, you're just asking to do the split.
Yes, yeah.
The itemization.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Could I have a motion to close pages? Fifteen, twenty six, twenty seven, thirty five, seventy six and clerk's office items on two oh five.
I'll make the motion.
Councilman or president then to make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilperson Murray makes the second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Oh, yes.
Yeah, I I was gonna wait, are we gonna wait and let everybody else look at it? Who wasn't here or is it, is everyone cool with closing it without them?
I I'm, I think these are pretty non-controversial, I think we can reopen the page. I think we'd be all be comfortable with reopening the page if and if either of the members have.
Okay, well then I'm on board.
Okay, so a-again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any, any opposed? All right, unanimous, thank you. Thank you so much, clerk and deputy clerk. And next on the agenda, the mayor's office budget presented by Deputy Mayor Megan Hyman, welcome. And we will open the budget to page sixteen. Sixteen and seventeen.
Yes, yep, not much changing this year. The only increases um, are coming in the personal services line, which covers uh, the salaries for all four positions in our office. And then um, the gas, heat and electricity lines, um, which are for the LeBarda Community Center on the north side. Um, the city owns that building and leases it to the United uh, to the United Way, uh, which does programming over there.
I probably asked this last year, it just seems like a weird place to put this, I I I don't know why, it's just not under. I don't know, anybody else?
The Barda Center.
DPW or Parks, yeah, the active electricity, I I mean, I don't care really, it just seems like it's a weird spot to stash it.
I agree, I don't know why it's there, I I agree with you. That um, that, but my only guess is, I don't even want to guess, the building had an expansion a few years back that the uh, previous administration kind of ran out of the mayor's office, um, at like a capital expansion. But I don't know, to my knowledge, those lines could have been there even prior to that, so I can't, I shouldn't try to speak to that.
Okay, um. Let's see. Used to have a higher uh, professional services amount, what was that, what they used to cover, I don't recall.
Yeah, I think at one point, um, that had been used for grant funding that grants, when grants were not being run out of any specific uh, department. Um, like the one that comes to mind is there was a um, healthy schools and community grant. Um, that that line is used for not last year, but a few years back. Um, for like pedestrian safety and street safe up-upgrades before um, reimbursement hit. Um, I think we just don't kind of, we don't do that anymore, so it's a much smaller line.
And then that looks like promotions and marketing, you've already, you got twelve cents left for this year.
We do.
I mean, what, what uh, question? Comfortable with keeping it at five thousand, I mean, is there, I mean, give us examples of what that generally.
Yeah, so in the past, that that line has been used for, um, like this year, we used it for the um, hometown heroes banners um, that are um, near Hudson Engle Park. Um, supporting that program, it's been used in the past for the um, uh, St. Patrick's Day Parade. Um, Police Week uh, flag raising, um, just kind of uh, miscellaneous things that it has gone to support. I think that five thousand is okay, there is another um, celebrations page that our office also presents on later on, that um, that has increased for twenty twenty six, um, for a couple of different reasons. And those, kind of each of those budget lines, there's overlap there, they cover similar things. So I do think that five thousand is okay.
Do you have plans this year to spend your uh, building, building improvement and maintenance for LeBarda?
Um, I believe that usually um, is based off requests that we get from them. Um, I know DPW has been over there in the past, that this past year. Um, to look at, they were having an issue with something, maybe their, maybe their heat. So if we can do it in-house, if we get a request from United Way and we can do it in-house, DPW will just take care of it. But um, we rely on the United Way to let us know if there are needs over there.
Any other questions on the mayor's office specifically? All right, let's see, Megan, what other pages do you have for us? Do you do?
We, I believe.
Municipal dues fifty one, I think.
Yep. And that is, um, that is the annual membership fees for NICOM, the New York Conference of Mayors and the US Conference of Mayors.
Uh, what else? Do you do examining boards?
I'm sorry.
Well, let me, I'll just ask you, what other pages do you have that you want to talk?
Oh, um, so it's just that municipal dues page and then um, we we usually present on the celebrations page also on page ninety six. Uh, I'm sorry, it's ninety five.
Ninety, no, ninety five.
So this budget page is increasing this year, um, mainly driven by the Luma, the fifty thousand dollar um, sponsorship that um, the city had previously used ARBA dollars to support that as part of, I think it was as part of like tourism, ARBA money. Prior to that, it was uh, that line was in the Economic Development Office, we have just moved it to the celebrations uh, page. Um, and then new uh, new this year is that fifteen thousand dollars for the hill, the Philharmonic. They are planning um, a concert for the um, America two fifty celebration. Um, so that, that sub-line is new.
So of money. Just, sorry, remember again. How much of this is new, new, totally new spending that we weren't covering from other pots of money?
I believe just the Philharmonic. And I I I'm not sure if um, outside of this two hundred and fiftieth anniversary has gotten tourism money through economic develop in the past, but this is, that is new to the celebrations line. Um, the city has sponsored sponsored Porch Fest in the past. Um, we've sponsored Luma in the past and um, have that community, that general kind of community event sponsorship too. That goes to things like the um, uh, Pride Coalition's firework show during Pride Month. That sponsorship uh, money comes from this line.
This is kind of a tangent aside, but surely our Philharmonic is not celebrating its two hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
It's like the um, the national, um, I think there's like an uh.
Okay, that makes more sense because I don't think we even had somebody playing a fiddle in a tavern in seventeen something around here, but okay.
Yeah, I think it is part of the larger celebration, is my understanding.
I think, um, I I know we went over economic developments budget line and I think they still have in their events, they still have the Columbus Day uh, parade, would that make sense to move that all into this line or this page?
Um, I don't know why that would be separated. I think it could, I I would have to ask there if there's a reason for that.
Like this is becoming centralized page for events.
Yeah, it does seem to make sense. I know that her um, Sarah's office and specifically Joel Boyd, like pretty much runs the coordination from the city standpoint. So I don't know if it's just easier um, to have it at that budget line in their office, but.
That's the one where they do the term of bands and stuff, right? I think that's what he does a lot of the coordination of the marching bands and stuff, yeah.
So the, and then the, for the general liability insurance, is that who? Who gets access as a event to to sponsorship, I guess? I know that sometimes it's a barrier for people that are trying to get event permits. Um, I don't know if it's a huge barrier when people have like been through the motion, but is that is that open to new people or is it just kind of?
It, so I don't know that we we give anything specifically from that line for general liability insurance. Um, like when we give uh, the Pride Coalition funding from that line, um, we just give it to the Pride Coalition to support the fireworks event. I'm not sure if they put that towards insurance or um, how exactly they, how exactly they use that. But um, like another example is this, a unique example for this past year was um, the celebrations line, some of the money went to you, to uh, cover the um, Binghamton High School Boys Basketball uh, Championship Parade. And some of the celebrations around that, and I I don't know if they would have used that specifically for insurance purposes, or I think it's just sort of a general sponsorship.
Okay. Yeah, again, I think the economic development has lines for promotions and events promotion type thing. It'd be nice to have that all on in one page, so it's not split across different departments. That's all I got.
Um, on the liability insurance front, it's been kind of a back burner hope of mine to figure out. front, it's been kind of a back burner hope of mine to figure out what the city's capacity would be to have a general liability policy for to to try and lower the barrier for people using public facilities and getting event permits and things. Um, to see what the city could stand. Uh, to have whatever, a rider or something in our insurance for small groups for small gatherings to kind of facilitate that and and for for events that are trying to get off the ground that are under a certain size. So, um, to try and lower that barrier of entry for especially newer groups trying to do events, so. Not necessarily a direct budget thing, but an indirect budget. Uh, let's see. Field D C. I think you make an interesting point, Councilman Hotchkiss. Um. I mean, it's a matter of I mean, I, I I mean, we can, we can discuss with economic development. I would essentially say that they're doing
That makes sense, okay.
That stuff that's being controlled by their office and these other bunches of being controlled by the mayor's office, I guess, is the difference. Does it matter for clarity budget wise if we uh, give economic development as well as joint control and move all the celebrations stuff and event stuff into one page? I don't know. If that gets us anything, gets us anywhere or not. We can think about it.
Some, I'm just looking at the economic development.
Yeah.
Um, section now, and I think some of it definitely, some of those sublines definitely do make sense to keep to their um. Like the Tournament of Bands is a good one that maybe it should just be under celebrations, aside from Joel kind of running point on that, but.
Well, I mean, that's why it makes sense. It leaves a specific person that's.
Yeah. But I think like event support, that is definitely coming from their office. Um. I I'm not really sure that it kind of matters either way, but I I guess I can see why some poster printing, street banner printing, that is stuff that they do.
Yeah, I mean, I think the I don't know. It, I don't know if it's worth spending much time with, but the event support seems like general liability insurance is also event support and like this is what the, their line for ten thousand dollars, it kind of falls into the same what, just like helping smaller events with. You know?
Yeah, I can't speak to that, what, what the Economic Development Office exactly uses that ten thousand event support for, but.
Right. Any other questions? No? All right, so here's what I propose. We'll put a pin in this discussion, leave ninety-five open because we also left economic development open. We can hash it out, maybe if there's will to move stuff later, and then we should close sixteen, seventeen and fifty-one. So I would propose a motion to close pages sixteen, seventeen and fifty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by me, second by Council President Dundon. Motion to close sixteen, seventeen and fifty-one. Um, and we're gonna leave celebrations on ninety-five open to have a discussion later. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, close sixteen, seventeen and fifty-one. All right. I I made the motion. All right. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, C R. Thank you, Rachel. Any other business? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor?
Aye.